Do you want to let this count the name of the call order? Please stand for the First Allegiance and one of the others.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from May 29.
Mayor making a motion that we approve the minutes with a change on page three at the bottom where it says Police Chief DePice, it should be Deputy Chief Schurz.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the minutes from May 29 with the revisions. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Moat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Snipes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kaye?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of a statement of bills paid in an amount of $361,841.40.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to pay the statement of bills in an amount of $361,841.40.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid with the clerk. Please call a roll.
Moat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Snipes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kaye?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we request your comments from the public. Item number four considers 2017 financial statement and report of the city's independent certified public accountants.
We have a dust saving, Mayor Adam Crouch with the firm of Winley, Noel, Nelson, and Johnson. They have been doing our audits for a number of years, as you know, and they were selected to perform the audit 2017. Kind of a new face that you haven't seen in the past, but they changed kind of the partner assigned or I don't know the right title, but they're assigned to the various audits so that people are fresh out on there to ensure the integrity of the process. So that, Mr. Crouch, will let you present, so maybe a little different than you've seen in past years.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Michael said, I'm Adam Crouch with Winley, Noel, Nelson, and Johnson, Pecos, Kansas, and I'm going to be covering the audit. Does everybody have a copy of the audit in front of them? It's not anything that was not found. I want to cover what was found. If you'll turn to page two of the report, around the middle of page two, you'll notice that we're issuing an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. And basically, our opinion on that is a clean opinion, unmodified opinion, that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in relationship to the regulatory basis of accounting that you choose to adopt each year. I'll cover more about that later. And right above that, you'll notice there's a paragraph that says adverse opinion under U.S. generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. Our professional standards require us to present an adverse opinion if you don't present GAAP basis financial statements. That's the way it's always been. So really, our main opinion is on regulatory basis, which every year you would agree to adopt. So our opinion essentially is a clean opinion on the financial statements under the basis of accounting that you have adopted. On page four, that is really the only page of this report that is actually a financial statement. It's essentially a summary of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash on a regulatory basis for all of your different funds. First column on the left is the beginning unencumbered balance that you had at the beginning of the year, and that was essentially your undesignated cash that you had available. Then you have receipts, expenditures, and then a column for ending unencumbered balance. And then you do have, not a strictly cash basis, but you do have accounts payable and encumbrances, although I don't think you use encumbrances that often. So it's accounts payable for each fund. So the far right-hand column is your ending cash balance. Two columns to the left is the ending unencumbered balance. So you started the year with unencumbered cash of about $2.9 million and ended the year with unencumbered cash of about $2.5 million. And the composition of your cash is, the cash balances, $2,679,569 is located down in the far right-hand column, down below petty cash all the way down to certificates of deposit. So this is essentially your basic financial statement, really your only financial statement despite the 40 pages of the report. On page six, at the top of page six, there's a footnote, B2, and that explains what your basis of accounting you're reporting on actually is. That explains what the regulatory basis is. And that basically is cash basis with recognition of a few accounts payables. And down toward the bottom of that paragraph, it mentions that the regulatory basis does not recognize your capital assets. It does not recognize your long-term debt, other accrued receivables and payables, and also deferred inflows and outflows. One of those major ones would be the capers liability. But you do have disclosures related to those items in this report. They're just not part of that page we just covered, which was your actual financial statement. On page nine, that is a listing of your long-term debt and the changes in your long-term debt during the year. So you have general obligation bonds, you have one temporary note issued 2016, and you have several capital leases. And it shows what the beginning of the year balance was, additions, payments, the balance of those issuances at the end of the year, and also the interest that was paid on those during the year. Now, on the next page, page 10, that is the schedule amortization of those outstanding long-term debt issues, assuming that you don't have any refinancing. So if you didn't refinance any of the debt on page nine, this would be the payment schedule, both principal and interest, for the next five years and then in five-year increments after that. On page 11, there is a schedule at the top, Note E, that shows what your inter-fund operating transfers were during the year, from the fund that it went to to the fund that it came from and went to, and the regulatory authority that you have. So you had almost $1 million of operating transfers during the year. Under Note F, you did not have any statutory or budgetary violations on any of the funds during the year. And at the bottom of page 11 all the way through page 12 is the capers liability I mentioned earlier. You're not required to disclose that on your financial statement, but you do get a calculation that's received from capers auditors that lists out what's your share, your proportionate share of the liability is for the two portions of capers. There's capers and there's police and fire. And at the end of 2017, your proportionate share of the unfunded liability of capers was $502,715. Your proportionate share of the unfunded liability for police and fire was $3,528,839. And again, it reemphasizes that that's not reported in your financial statements, but it is disclosed. And the way that your share of that is calculated each year is your amount of contributions is factored into the total amount of contributions that went into the plan during that year, and that's how much of the liability that you get each year. And capers is on the June 30 year end, so their report comes out June 30, and it's trended forward to the end of the calendar year. On page 16 is a schedule of all of your budgeted funds and a comparison of your expenditures of those funds to what they actually were. And on the far right-hand column, you'll see that all of those are favorable variance. And again, as I mentioned earlier, you did not have any budgetary violations. And then the last set of pages, on pages 17 to 27, those are schedules of your receipts and expenditures by each of your budgeted funds that has the actual and the budget and a comparison of actual and budget. And the last 11 pages of the report, from page 28 to page 30, are all of your non-budgeted funds and their receipts and expenditures. But those are just actual. There's no comparison to budget because they aren't budgeted funds. So there really were not any major changes to the reporting format in 2017 as there were last year in 2016, rendering a clean opinion on the financial statements under the regulatory basis of accounting. And we'd like to thank Michael, Zach, and Michelle and all the city staff for their assistance during the audit process and appreciate the opportunity to service you.
Do you have any recommendations for adjustments or any challenges we leave the process?
I think the one that they note in the typical, I'm not sure if the right letter this one's called, is obviously at the same location of Judy's side, the yellow one is numbered, which is pretty standard, that's probably standard. That's probably talking about how you do your budget, but it's probably one that'd be with us for years to come, I imagine, so. I would just also make a couple of notes. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Michelle for all her hard work because, as I say almost every year, this is just a document prepared at one point during the whole year, and there's a lot of pieces that go into the financial statements. And really, the auditors, as I say, they're reviewing the work, not doing the work in that sense. And so, you know, if we're not providing them with adequate documentation for what it is we do and why we made this payment and what we did here and there, it makes their job much more difficult, and you would be unlikely to see an unqualified opinion in those situations. So I want to thank Michelle for all she does. And quite honestly, all the department editors, always a lot of paperwork, and sometimes we don't quite get all the extra paperwork that Michelle wants us to do. But the other thing I would just note, again, is on the, especially on the governmental general fund, that's really our working fund, as you all know. But again, we saw our balance grow. We're still in that place where we want to be, about 15% of our expenditures annually. That's a proper, healthy reserve, so we were at the end of the year setting at about $90,000. That's a good place for us to be as we look at our budgets. And we haven't budgeted that, and we'll talk about that at this point, but I think we have done an excellent job over the years of making sure we, one, develop this balance, and then, two, maintain that balance. And that takes good stewardship of the city council when you're making decisions and keeping us on track. So I appreciate the hard work you all do. Obviously, you can see the other funds, but in reality, that, and I would say, the general fund and our business funds are the ones we have to pay close attention to. Obviously, we have to have money in the debt service fund to pay our debt, but those are the ones that really paint bills. The others, some of them are, you know, ins and outs on the law enforcement trust or things, we're holding it credit, there's not much to, no reason to keep a lot of cash in trust. With that, I'm sure the auditor worry, if you have any questions, the staff will be happy to answer.
Can you explain the net pension liability?
Basically, what that is, is the difference between the assets that the capers plan has and promised future benefits that will be paid out through retirees that are in the system as of whatever date the report is being done. And I forgot what the total unfunded liability is for the capers, system-wide, in both the capers portion and the police and fire, but it's fairly significant.
It must be big.
Yes. You know, the thing about the unfunded liabilities and pension plans, and you'll remember a few years ago, there was a lot of discussions around that issue, and plans needed to change and did that, and for the most part, capers made some changes. There wasn't many changes on the police and fire because technically, it's a fully funded plan in the sense that the amount of contributions, they do an extra RST every year and set our contributions. I can tell you that, you know, in the upcoming year, we're, will be right around 25% for police and fire side. So it's a significantly larger amount. On KPNF's side, it's been growing the amount that the city has to contribute now, a little bit what the employee has to contribute. So it's always a date and time. Of course, you know, three years ago, four years ago, whenever, the market was way down and, you know, the sky's falling, and then, you know, the market comes back and fills some of that gap. And of course, it's important, but they make assumptions that everybody that can retire will retire on the day of retirement. So yeah, if everybody retired all at the same time, we have a problem. It's kind of like the banks, if everybody went the same day, took all their money out, those banks probably wouldn't have enough cash on hand to pay all their deposits. So there's a little bit of that in there, so the numbers are big. And when you, you know, there's this big amount in capers, or KPL, but we're a pretty small portion, and we have, it's a big number. I don't know, that answers that a little bit. I think it was probably about two or three years ago that they required this payment to be added. Caught a lot of people off guard.
It was a new accounting standard that required, and if you were a GAAP basis, you would actually recognize that liability in your financial statements. We have several clients that we had to do that, and that took a lot of explaining to then all of a sudden, $20 million is coming under your balance sheet as a liability that had never been there before.
So you saw some cities or entities that actually showed that now, that, you know, that negative, that aspect. And that's hard to, that's hard to walk out there and say, okay, we were really healthy last year, and this year we're broke, so to speak. It really makes comparability very difficult. They did that, many, I say many, it probably happened when I remember, on, it used to be all your roads and streets and infrastructure were kind of off balance sheets, so they were separate, and then they'd roll them into your, put your own GAAP into your assets and say, hey, go out and take all your roads and give them value, current value, depreciate. So you started depreciating. Obviously, the intent is that you build up depreciated value, so over time, you're putting a little money back in depreciation. So when it's time to rebuild the road 20 or 30 years, you've built up enough reserves to pay for it. I don't know if that's how it actually works, but that's the theory behind putting these things on your asset and my ability proportions. More that you probably wanted to know about, governmental accounting, more than I want to know, but we got people like this do it all the time.
Just one last question. I've been around here for a long time, and every year it comes up that separation of duties or separation of overseen or something. Do you foresee that being any kind of a problem, or what kind of flags does that raise?
Well...
Is that a silly question, or is that something you usually worry about?
No, in smaller entities, there's always going to be that risk that's there. I think we call it a significant deficiency, and that's the internal control question there. And the language of significant really is a little stronger than, that's where our accounting standards sometimes fail us a little bit. Sometimes they make those words. You hear significant and material, and for some people, there's not much difference between that. But we have that on many clients where there's an opportunity for an employee to do processing, record-keeping, and custody of assets is a major one that's there. And when you have a small shop, that is an inherent risk. It's our responsibility under the standards to report that. Whether it occurred or not, that's not the key to us reporting it, it's that is there a condition that's there. And compensating controls, though, do mitigate that to some extent, especially on the dispersment side, because when you just approved your expenditures and you have authority up to $10,000 for certain things, and above that, permission from the council has to be set. So there are things you can do to mitigate some of that. Cash is one of the areas where an inherent risk is sometimes the most likely to have an issue. But I don't think there's any, there's not any red flag, let's put it that way. That's somewhat of, and that's again where the standards changed about seven or eight years ago, where the requirements on segregation and what gets reported and what doesn't were really narrowed up. So we're required to follow those standards.
Thanks. You know, it just, that comes up every year, every month, every year, and you just, and I understand the problem is not enough people to do that, but I put that in the term of a double-key operation for a bank, you know, they have that double keys that you try and... I just didn't want to have something out there that we could get caught at, you know, just all of a sudden get caught and get in some kind of trouble.
What we do and have implemented a number of things to try and reduce that. You know, obviously, with Michelle, she got processed, you know, we send things to her and she processes and she prepares checks, but, you know, our standard is we always have, you know, different people signing checks, always having a lax efficiency, whether it's the mayor, the mayor's not paying, the council presidents on the check signing. So there's rare occasions where you would see potentially three of us, it would be Zach and Michelle sign something, but that would be pretty rare, it'd be one of those things. So we try to do that. The person that does the cash closeouts is separate from Michelle. Stuffing, you know, who's checking the things ends up going to Zach. So we try internally to do things that may not meet the recognition from the accounting thing, but we just as an internal process try to do that. Why we adopted our financial standards, you know, policies a number of years ago, get those in writing. We were doing most all of them, but somebody says, well, you know, I didn't do something, at least now we have some policies around them. So yes, it's one of those things we like to resolve. And I can tell you, I've worked in cities much larger, 30,000, three or four people in an accounting department, a finance department, and you still get tamed with separation of duties.
The court says, I don't like curiosity.
I mean, I said, somebody just did payroll and somebody just did accounts payable, so, you know, that's not likely to happen. And I don't like any other small business out there.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the 2017 financial statements and report of independent certified public accountants prepared by Winley, Noel, Nelson, and Johnson, LLC.
Second.
It has been moved in second to accept the financial statement and report of independent certified public accountants, Winley, Noel, Nelson, and Johnson, LLC. Would you please call a roll?
Moat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Snipes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kaye?
Now, the fun really begins.
Oh, the fun, the fun.
Remember their presentation regarding 2019 end of budget planning process.
And this will be the perimeter of our... So as in every year, we start this formal process of the budget to get to sometime in August where we adopt the formal budget and then move into the next fiscal year, which starts January 1 for us and go through there. So really, tonight, I want to take a little bit about what we just got from our audit, kind of put that in some context of just operations, and focus on really three key areas that I think are going to drive our budget. I think one of the things we've done well over the last number of years, decade, is our budget, the foundation of our budget's pretty settled now. We're not trying to change things and add things and modify. We have a pretty solid budget in place, and so don't anticipate spending a lot of time on the, so to speak, the pins and pencils and paper, and paper flares. Instead, focus on really three key areas. With that, oh, I have a clipper there, wow. Technology, one of our, one of our things that we've been talking about doing. Again, I will not go through all of these, just to remind us that a number of years ago, the city council, not together, came up with critical success factors. We try to look at that internally as staff on an ongoing basis to decide how things might fit in one or more of these categories, how we're achieving some of those. Some we do better at, some we can do better at, so we continue to work on that. But some of the things that were set out in 2018, and I realize we are not even six months into 2018, but these things were set back in August, so a number of them happened early in the year. We have been focusing on technology overall and how we can use that, but one of the things that we've done is the bodyborne cameras was one of the big items we approved this past year along with some other technology upgrades. Again, I think this is, we really are a leader in this area. I've talked to a few other cities, and they're always amazed at how long we've had bodyborne cameras, and we started back to the old pins in the pocket types, I think is the way they were, probably almost a decade ago, to where now today we have high-quality video, and I think the chief would attest to that, probably been money well-spent on many number of occasions, especially in the areas of liability, and as you'll watch the news at the beginning of the night, that's not going away. And so technology like this helps as a training tool, it helps us, protects us from liability, it helps the citizens understand what we're doing in those kind of areas. Village South, as you know, has been a user of time and discussions along this council and body for really almost two years. I think we are nearing the finish line in the sense of seeing something actually come out of the ground, and I know you all get asked that all the time, as do I, but we spent a lot of time in the past year, the first part of this year, kind of in this transition of, I think as Mr. Johnson says, from kind of a wayside stop with some smaller hotels and limited services to something that will be a significant landscape feature on the I-70 corridor up there, and really has the potential to really take advantage of other investments that we've made up there, whether it be roads, or sewers, or other improvements we see in the future. We did do a new agreement with our plane review. Again, we try to see if there's better ways to do things, and IBTS is something we brought in several years ago. So we have a third-party inspection service, and I think it's worked very, very well for us. I know recently that our friends in Bonner Springs have also joined up with them. They had a long-time building official with lots of experience and was excellent, and then he retired, and quite honestly, this is an area very, very hard to fill people. We are at the very beginning of the trail extension project that we funded this year through a series of grants and some money left over from K9 and some of our local sales tax funds. You've probably seen Mistaking, but they've cleared some trees and maybe done some rough grading, so one of our many public projects. The industrial park, I know you all have been involved with the IRBs. Most of these say constructing, but they're really done, fast and all, has finished, pretty much finished their facility. I don't know if they've got their final CO yet. Metar has finished their building, occupied. Again, I think they have a couple of final items. And if you've been by FedEx, once again, you see a lot of dirt. The dock, I mean, it's amazing, 103 more dock doors. As I recall, this is the, that's a FedEx freight facility, so there's lots of different types, but this is the largest FedEx freight facility in the nation. So it is a significant investor into our community. As part of what we're doing up north, we have this charter ordinance that's still in the kind of the final pending stages, but will allow us to use our trades and guest tax dollars maybe in some other ways than we were limited to before, give more flexibility to the council. The next two kind of go together, though they weren't necessarily intended to, just like Village South and the sewer weren't necessarily expected to fall right hand in hand, but we do have the term sheet that's been approved by the council for the property to the north of us. I wish I could say I have the contract for you to execute, but dealing with attorneys, sometimes everything's in a hurry and sometimes everything is slow. I have a question, how quick you want it to hit us. But that's moving forward. And then, of course, just our last meeting, we finished our comprehensive facility assessment. I think that was well worth what we spent there. It gives us some places to look to and go to. Obviously, it's not something we can do in one day, but we've been talking about what if, what if, what if. At least now we have some pieces there that we can work from and hopefully implement those over, over a period of time. I think the architects, you know, they had like a three, you know, three one-year things, do this in a year, and this in a year, and this in a year. I would love to do that. My suggestion is that's probably unlikely to happen. So going back a little bit to our audit that we just heard, some of the recaps here, and it shows up in the audit on that, I think, page four, but we did spend a little more than we thought we were going to spend when we budgeted. Again, we budgeted back in July and August. Some of that had to do with some of the public works things, some street projects we did and things like that. But on the other side of the coin, we outperformed on the revenue side. So basically, for every extra dollar we spent, we brought in three extra dollars. Some of those are in-and-out monies, so some of the things we had... Some of those are in-and-out money, so some of the things we have with Village South or with inspection services, so they show up on one side and go out on the other side, so it grows. But mainly, I think we'll see it in our sales tax is where most of the body of growth above and beyond the expenditures occur. We've broken this out kind of to say, where are the overperformers? I think that was Zach's turn, I kind of liked that, overperformers. Again, as you can see, sales tax was one of those areas, which we like it when sales tax overperforms. Hopefully, we'll continue to do that. The reimbursed revenue, that's one of the ones where it's always hard to budget that number, and it's kind of a catch-all for lots of things. But because we did have a lot of things with Village South, if we do any type of projects where we use third parties, SKW for engineering, some dating stuff, other people, it gets charged back or comes back as a reimbursed revenue, and then somewhere in the budget, it's an expense. So, we pay for the planning services to SKW, we get reimbursed. We do charge an administrative fee on that of ten percent. So if we, if it costs us, you know, a hundred dollars, we bill it back out at a hundred and ten, mainly just to cover the expenses of processing, the paperwork and things. We don't get complaints about that. I mean, every now and then somebody say, well, I think they spent too many hours, but in reality, they, they look at it, go, this is a lot less expensive than I've done in other cities in the metro area, so we don't hear too much about it. Ambulance fees is one of the larger ones that we saw. Again, mainly activity-driven, so I don't think that is a surprise there. Our guys do a really good job on the collection side, trying to make sure that what we're billing out, we're collecting back appropriately and properly. I, it's surmised that we probably are greater than a lot of other agencies. Sometimes your agencies are in the forty percent collection, so they're only collecting forty cents of every dollar they can collect. We're probably more into the sixties in that area. Now, of course, you bill out a eight-hundred-dollar ambulance ride, that's your rate, but it's a Medicare, Medicaid, and they reimburse you at three-hundred-and-twenty-five bucks. That's all you're going to get, so you can't do anything. But it's really more the private pays, where people have copays and those kind of things. That is where most places don't spend much time, and we try not to beat them over the head, but if I take an ambulance ride, my insurance pays, pays, but I got a hundred-dollar copay, then I should pay my hundred-dollar copay. And so, I know Tony and the chief's group works on that. Franchise fees, it's always over the board. It kind of, you know, kind of depends on what you're doing. When you have warm winters, your gas is going to be down, but you get hot summers, and we've had some of those. Electric's up, electric obviously is our largest franchise. I think there's more digital services out there, the spectrum TVs and people like that. So that revenue's going up. Lay-in lines, I don't, you know, probably not even a franchise fee on lay-in lines, hardly even working, I don't think there's any amount of them. You can see the others there. Again, miscellaneous revenues, we sell a car, we get an insurance claim check, we get a reimbursement that's not tied to anything. A lot of that is in that miscellaneous income. On the other side of the coin is property taxes were down a little bit. Now, I understand the way we budget versus kind of how the state budgets. So, the state always assumes that you're going to collect a hundred percent of your property taxes. We all know that that's not realistic. When we budget, we budget assuming that we're going to current-year taxes, that we're going to collect ninety-seven percent of current-year taxes. We're generally in the ninety-six to ninety-seven percentile. We then use for delinquent taxes, two percent of current. Now, a delinquent tax is something that's more than a year old, so if you pay your taxes late, well, I would maybe delinquent in that sense, it's not a delinquent tax if you pay it in the current year. Once we get past, I think, August, the new bills are prepared, or I guess maybe November, then anything after that, if it was a 2017 tax or twenty-fifth, 2017, then it gets considered delinquent. So, we were up a little bit on the delinquent. We underbudgeted delinquent, we overbudgeted slightly on the, on the regular. Motor vehicle taxes has been one that's in change because of, especially watercraft and how we're handling that. We get a formula every year, they kind of give us the number, then plug it into the budget. Some years it's right on, other years it's off. I wish I could say there's a method. We've tried several different things. We get some of it just formulary, and if you start messing with the formulary, that's the whole state budget process, and it goes there. Corp fines were off, but I would say not really. We kind of, this three-fifty is kind of the number we plugged in. We've been anywhere from the low three-hundreds to almost four-hundred thousand a few years ago. So, sometimes it's police activity, but sometimes the police are really, really active, but they're really active doing criminal stuff and not traffic stuff, and other times they have a little time for traffic, or there's work zones, or there's different things that drive that. Probably the area I have the biggest concern is just our sports registration to see what's happening in that process, why, you know, is it a matter of we're not doing enough work to attract kids into our program, is the kids, you know, as they get older, we're, we're kind of a fourteen-and-under sports program. We don't do a lot of sports, you know, we're, we're not that tournament soccer leagues and stuff like that. But how are we doing to try to keep people engaged, and how, how can we spread out what it is that we're doing? We know we've seen a down climb in the soccer side, but we're proud on basketball. It's only two years in. It had a spike to begin with, kind of, you know, level out, so we'll see how that does this year. Baseball's been staying steady, but, you know, what else can we do out there? What other kind of programs can we invest in? So, we'll continue to work on that. Sales tax is always, you know, for the most part, it's, I'm going to say somewhat of a flat line. I mean, it, it peaks and valleys. It, you know, I see, you know, in seventeen, they had this big spike in May on use tax. Sometimes it's really hard to say what that is. I can tell you, one year, not in this jark, there was a local company here, and they bought all their, they bought new trailers for, so trucks and trailers, right, they're a big distribution company. But they buy them, and then they lease them back to themselves, and when they do it that way, it generates a taxable sale. So then we had this big spike, you know, and all of a sudden, they went from somebody that they, they pay sales tax to like being one of our top five sales back there. So we're trying to do some more research in this area. As you can see, you know, it, it seasonally fluctuates. We tend to probably see more fluctuation around use tax. I remember use tax is taxes that you buy something, say you go to Nebraska Furniture Mart, and you buy something at Nebraska Furniture Mart, but you have to deliver here, and the tax is paid here, or I think cars can get handled. So you're not paying the tax directly at the retailer in the city. So city sales, the use tax is there, and the, the, the sales tax, use tax is generally on that, could be professional services and other things of that nature. So, this is just the city side. We also get county sales and use tax as well, right? This is just the city number, so, and sometimes those offset each other. We can start moving. Overall, our sales tax has been growing over a number of years. Probably the areas where I have a little concern coming into this year, just knowing, you know, the car dealership that we have has, they've moved their operations, taken that part of your operations to another, out of the county, out of the region actually, or out of this area. You know, how that impacts us, understanding car sales. Sometimes it's hard to know because the state doesn't release individual sales tax information for obvious reasons. So they'll give us some areas that we can look at and track, but I will tell you, there's been interest already in that facility, even by car sales operations, so it's a nice facility. They, they did a good job with it. We've had to grow the plaza a little less, so we have some things offsetting some of these, but it doesn't take much for us to have a sales tax bump, right? Because it's such a small number. I mean, if you close that same car lot in Kansas City, Kansas, or Marion, Kansas, where they have all those brand-new car lots, you might not even notice seventy, eighty cars, you know, a month's sales. But here, we'll probably see it, you know, we'll be able to see that, that bump, but we're certainly working on that. This is an area which will probably get my ire up a little bit, but I want to try to explain this because this really is from last year going into this year. So, I spent some time on the phone with the, with our relatively new tax appraiser, Kathy Brandy. And so in seventeen, we had certified values of about fifty, originally it came in, I think, at fifty-one million, and, and was the original cert, or this fifty-three with the, with the utilities, and they're fifty-three on it. So we got that, and for the most part, between then and November, when we get our final adopted values, there's not a lot of change. So there's all, she just certifies all the value, goes to the clerk's office. There may be things that are under a vote of order, so somebody's, you know, said, hey, I think my property's overvalued. They go there, and you see some adjustments, and it'll tweak your, it'll tweak your, your tax rate a little bit. But it's, what happened in reality is, I mean, I'm still trying to figure out why there's two different numbers, but what they sent us in the, in the actual certified value from the clerk's office, it was around fifty-five thousand, six hundred before our budget. So when we're going through our budget, we're saying, okay, we got fifty-five, six, that's up a little bit, we want to hold our mill levy the same, all's good. And we went on with that, knowing that there are probably some things we would have liked to have done, but we were trying to hold the, the mill levy. Well, then afterwards, we get, I don't know, really your mill levy is fifty-seven million, your assessed value. That's a big jump. I mean, normally, it's, you know, you might not even a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, might be thirty, fifty thousand. So then we get this, this year, this is very preliminary, so these haven't been certified since that we've gotten from the clerk's office, and we're sitting at about fifty-eight, five, but if you go from their primary certified there, they're saying we're going to see a growth of about eight-point-six. If in reality, we take what we got actual certified in November to that number, we're setting at about three percent overall growth, which I think is probably a more likely number, three-to-five. But clearly, our commercial industrial base is where the growth is. Clearly, our industrial commercial base, you know, pays a bigger portion of the overall tax bill. They're, you know, well, you know, they're, they're compared residential, it's about, you know, sixty, forty, or fifty-five, forty-five split. So that's really where we have to keep our eye on the property tax side, but that's something we're spending time on this year, is understanding that. IRBs and what we do with pilots, it's also been an area that we've really had to focus on, that is, we've had times when we have a piece of property, so when you give it a tax abatement, you have an IRB, that property comes completely off the tax rule, it's a hundred percent quote tax abatement, so it comes off the property tax rule, then we, through the agreement, do a payment and rule of taxes or pilot, and that pilot comes back on, but it's a separate revenue area. So, it impacts on one side, gives it back on the other. We've had a number of times, though, where they take it off the property, forget to put it on the pilot, or they put it on the tax rule, and it still had it on the pilot. Either one is bad. So, every year, we go through all of those and say, okay, we want to make sure this one is on there. I think that's a little bit about what happened here, this is about the time Perk Jones was doing some things. It's about the same money, they, you know, generally it was, well, it wasn't that, it was another piece of property, which it probably was, but we have to really be careful about that. What I didn't like about it is it took out of y'all's hands the ability to make decisions about the mill levy. So, you'll see here in this next slide, you know, if I go back to 2014, and when, when we do our budget, we don't set the mill levy, but we set a budget, and, and I say to you, based on values, et cetera, this is what we estimate the mill levy. So, I don't, does have a point of that. So back in 2014, we estimated it around forty-seven, four-twenty-four, when it all came in, and we got the final values, we're at forty-seven, three-sixty-seven. Okay, you know, a tenth of a mil, I, I, I mean, you're, you're talking negligible amount. And as we went along, you kept the same thing, we held the mill levy, it came in about the same. And last year, we were on the, you know, hey, let's hold our mill levy where it's at, forty-seven, three, it came in at forty-six-point-one-five-five. Now, I know nobody is opposed to say, hey, we lowered the mill levy, and this is good, and I'm up here to say the same thing. But when we lose the ability to have a discussion about more than a mil on our, on our values, and that impacted decisions that you got to make as a body to say, you know what, we want to lower our mil, half a mil, but we want to spend more money on fire protection or streets or public works or whatever the things we thought were important, that's where I started to have a problem, because you didn't get an opportunity to have that debate. You may have still said, you know what, but we want to roll this all the way back down this amount. We don't want to generate any more income year one than year two. That's fine, but we didn't get the chance to have that debate. And that, that's probably where my concern is, is now, this year, we have to, and with the tax, now we have to figure out how to work around that discussion. I will tell you that actually I'm going up to actions on Thursday, the league has put together a working room, primarily of county and city people like myself, and with the tax areas to say, we've got to be a better way to do this budget process. I mean, we, we set a budget, and that goes away, and then somebody tells us the mill levy, and then it all goes to the state, and if we forgot to, you know, put a dock on something, they send us a little letter saying you forgot your dock, they'll do it again next year. And we generate a lot of processes, as you know, every year we adopt the state budget, and then the budget we really work with, because the state budget doesn't allow you to put reserves in and do all this, so everybody, everybody does this, has some line items that they build into their budget to make the two numbers work. That's not the way we should be doing budget in Kansas or anywhere else. On the ending cash balance, and we, we talked about that tonight, I think, I think it's all good news. Sometimes I think probably I'm a little conservative on the financial side, but I would probably rather be financially conservative than, than, than wishful thinking, which is part of the problem we got into in the past. But if you look over the last few years, and you can see the green versus the orange, the green basically is when we adopted the budget, again, we're, we're doing this in August, and we assumed that the year-end of 2014, as an example, we'd have about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. We ended up at a hundred, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three, and I don't remember what drove that, but there was, there was a change in that year. But pretty much every year, we've done better than we adopt. And again, never going to say having cash in the reserves is a bad thing. We do have to be careful. You don't want to get to a point where you're not funding things because you think your cash is going to be too low, and in reality, it's not, or you start putting away too much cash. I mean, I was in a community one time where they had almost sixty percent reserve. Well, it sounds good, and they have a high reserve because they did have some issues that could take a lot of them quickly, but your bond, you know, people that do bond issues and so. Right, well, if you've got all this cash sitting there, why are you issuing bonds? Tax records? Well, if you're making me pay taxes, but you got all this money, why? So, and those are good questions that we have to watch. So, we always try to watch where that cash balance is between being good stewards and just saving money to say, we've got a lot of money, right? Just having money in the bank probably doesn't get us where we want to go in the long term. All right, so the next number of slides are going to really be about what I envision us going through in this budget process, and some of this is things you've already heard, you know, from the year-end report, so I'm not going to spend a ton of time on them, other than to say, probably repeat myself several times here. Calls for service in the police department, types of calls are going on, things they're doing is increasing, right? Traffic's increasing, stuff's increasing, all that stuff, and Village South, and that goes, it's going to increase calls for service on the police side, fireside, EMS side. So, they're going up. Likewise, fire, going up, right? So, I mean, we used to be, eight-hundred calls would be the fire overall, you know, we're at eleven-hundred. We're probably on track to the local departments now that, you know, grow. We're probably on track to the local departments now that, you know, grow another five, ten percent at least. So, we, you know, we don't create the calls or respond to the calls, so that's growing. And part of that's the discussions we've had. Public works, the same thing. I mean, maybe not as much the calls for services increasing as the expectations of what we want from our public works, right? So, when we had one man in a pickup truck and a shovel, we assumed, well, what can one man in a pickup truck do? But as we bought new equipment, and we're doing more maintenance of our roads, and people get their roads paved, and once they're paved, they don't want to see them go back to the way they used to be, and they went right-to-ways mode, and all the things that we spent a lot of time on was hard to do with a staff of two and a director, and now have another public works person with the road repair stuff. So, their work is partially, it's increasing, but a lot of it is what we expect from them, and we do a lot better job of documenting. And I mean, one of the great things that Tabe's brought to us with her experience is, we don't have to guess. Well, how much time did we spend doing something? In the past, it was, "Well, I think, you know, Johnny was out there picking up trash last week, so I..."okay, he spent a couple of days. We have a lot better idea of what we're doing, and again, thanks to Tabe and the work she's been doing. So, two things are going to probably be overriding in this budget. I'll hit the second one first, and that's this property tax lead issue that went in two years ago. I think this will be the year where most people feel it. The first year, there was enough movement still that probably didn't catch most municipalities. I think this year it will, which is basically saying, our property tax cap is at one-point-four percent of what the revenues were in previous years. We already showed you our values are going up three or four percent. So, we're going to have that push of revenue needed versus a cap that keeps us from doing that. Now, there's a number of pieces in there with police and public safety, but probably the largest driver that's not included is health benefits and those types of things that are out there. And so, we do have a lot of people on our police and fire side, so that's good in that sense, but those are also big ticket items. So, it ends up impacting, if I can't do much over here, I can only do here, how do you still take care of the roads and City Hall and all those kind of things? The other thing, I'm going to spend a fair amount of time this evening on this, is pay and retention. I think, as y'all know, this is recent, something recently we've seen. I think it's been coming, and so I want to spend a little time on that, but, you know, we're sitting here today still with, you know, vacant positions. We know the police department in the past, you know, we approved a position, it took almost a year to finally get filled, and the staffing, just, you know, people move and change and things, and public works were still short, and we've got two people on the admin side, and so it's a challenge. And I think what I said before, and I'll say again, is it's a combination of workload and pay, right? So, just paying people more money isn't going to get more work done. But when we have people saying, "I can go to work somewhere and do my job and get properly compensated for it, and I don't have to do three other people's job and not make more money?" That's what's happening. I mean, that's what we're seeing people do. So, that's, I think those two go together. So, three areas, compensation, staffing, capital expenditures. So, what we've done on the compensation side, and I'll get to it, is through the Mid-America Regional Council, they contracted with a firm, kind of a data, I call it more of a database firm than a compensation firm. And what they did is they went out to communities all over the U.S., actually, and people enter all their data. We did this too. We paid, I think, two-hundred dollars or so. So, we put our data in, and we can get the data back out of it. You know, is it the perfect compensation study? No, and I haven't found one yet that's just absolute. But what I wanted to start to do was say, "Okay, if I look at pretty much our competitive areas, how are we stacking up with our pay plan?" So, I'm not trying to go out and change our pay plan. I'm not trying to necessarily modify our pay and benefit, but just how do we start to compare in the market? So, we broke it down to Kansas and Missouri metro area and said, "We're going to kind of use under twenty-five thousand, over twenty-five thousand." There seemed to be a pretty reasonable break right about there, and you could pick twenty, you could pick different things. And we didn't try to go out to Western Kansas, because quite honestly, that's not where we're competing. We're not going to go to St. Louis, because that's not where we're competing. You know, where are people, where do we see people coming from and going to? And, you know, we see people go to Shawnee, and we see people go to UG, and we see people come from Gray Valley, and we see people go to Liberty, and, you know, we see, just over time, we're going... So, basically, we had sixteen cities on the Kansas side. We had ten on the Kansas side that were bigger than twenty-five thousand. On the Missouri side, we split it that way again, you had about thirteen of them under, six over. You will notice Kansas and Missouri is not in this study. The UG is in this study, because they are a direct competitor, I think, for us in the labor force. What is interesting is, I will tell you, in a number of times, the average pay in the smaller Kansas and Missouris were actually higher than the larger cities, especially in the starting ones. I felt that's a little bit interesting. Kansas is a better payer than Missouri, just across the board. I mean, if you take jobs and start breaking them down that way. Typically, Kansas pays better than Missouri. I might tell you why, but it seems to be the trend. We did bring in some counties on the fire side, because there's a lot of fire districts in this area. EMS services are provided countywide, Leavenworth, Miami County, some of those, Johnson County. So, in order to compare some of our positions, we broke this out. We did this also in some other areas. We take public works or police, or we didn't see much difference by doing that, but on the fireside, it had a little bit more being. So, altogether, whatever that is, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, five, fifty-one entities we pulled data from. Not every entity has every position, so you have some positions, maybe where you only have, you know, you might have eight or ten comparables, and some two, and some twenty. So, it just depends on the entity. And I didn't bring every job, again, I just wanted to kind of pull out some basics, because I think it's pretty clear what happens. When you look at step one, and understand, when we did our pay system, we did this six, eight years ago, I think it was, the assumption was step five was the market. So, we said at that time, excuse me, we wanted to be average in the market. We didn't want to lead the market, and we didn't want to trail. And market pay was around step four or five. And at the time, we only had five steps. And the recommendation by the study was, we're going to put these steps in, A through whatever, and between step A and B, and B and C, and C and D, it'll be a five percent. And going across, so grades is five, steps for three, and you need to make sure every year to do a COLA adjustment. What we haven't done, basically, is any COLA adjustments, very, a couple of them, very well. So, if five was the market, thereabouts, four or five, then, and we haven't done much COLA, we've gotten farther and farther away from what we would consider our top-end positions. So, I think what is pretty clear is, when you look at, and we broke our pay plan in the last couple of years, between exempt and non-exempt, because we were starting to see bleed over. So, if you're taking somebody like a fire captain who's a non-exempt, but then try to compare him to public works director, that's exempt, we were getting a lot of, you know, competition in there. So, we kind of broke the two halves. So, this is non-exempt, so these are hourly-based people. And I picked out one that we all know, because they're easy, but, you know, a maintenance worker, or, you know, a guy that's mowing the grass and doing streets and all that. If we hire them in step one, in theory, they're doing pretty well in comparison to the whole thing. So, the second, this line is our pay plan. The second line is the average of all of those entities together. I got it broken down by Kansas versus Missouri, et cetera. I just took the average of all that. So, what you see is, we do okay at step one. By the middle, we start getting behind, and by the top, even though we've added two steps, we're way behind. We're fifteen, twenty, thirty percent behind for our people out here. And what I'll show you in a minute is, most of our people aren't at step one, right? They're not, most of our people have been here longer than a year, right? We have good longevity, but our pay system hasn't kept up with our longevity. So, you know, again, labor, executive assistant, which was Jessica's job, which doesn't even really exist now. I mean, we're doing this permanent manager. I can't even interview people at the top of this range. I mean, I just, I mean, that person today, you know, got a lot of years of experience in local government, said, "It wouldn't come for less than forty-five thousand." Okay, thank you. Now, if I look at the market, forty-five, that person would be right in the middle and should be somebody that we can hire. I don't know if I'd hire her or not, but at least should be able to hire her. Firefighter, EMT, firefighting was the hardest area, to be quite honest, to get comparables to, and I think it's just the way people classify firefighter, EMT, firefighter, paramedic, paramedic. It just, it's a little more challenging. We have some other data, though, that the fire departments have done, that follow the same thing. Police officer, right? These are people that are out on the street twenty-four seven, doing stuff that you do every day. And I know nobody ever wants to hear about the non, you know, the exempt people in the department heads, but I think you can see this is, we're definitely behind. When you go to those non-exempt people, or those exempt people, I should say, your mid-level managers in our organization, the deputy fire chief, the assistant city manager, the public works director, right? And I'm amazed at these numbers, too, but we're not even close at step one. We're not even in the market. And when you get up here to step five, we're forty, fifty percent. Now, what's interesting is, we were just at, Zach and I were just at a meeting, city managers, there were seventeen cities there, from Paterson down into Miami County, three counties, basically, actually, four, Johnson, Windock, Douglas, and Miami, I think, were all...
Leavenworth.
Or Leavenworth, that's it. And everyone said, "Well, we're behind. We're doing a pay study. We're going to increase pay by at least forty-five percent in the upcoming budget." And we're going, "Okay, if Lee Wood, an open park, I mean, literally, stood there and said, 'Well, we're not the leader, so we're behind.'" I'm not sure who the leader is. Again, I don't have to be the leader, but we're going to see this pressure of dollars in pay systems. And I don't have an answer for you tonight, I'm just trying to say, this is going to impact our budget, and it's impacting our ability to hire qualified people. It's that simple. Again, not saying we're going to go give everybody a big raise, but don't be surprised when I come back to you in very near future and say, "We have some resources in the current year." We talked about it, you know, about whether we did a COLA adjustment or step. Really, we're going to do both. Didn't think we'd get funded. I'm not sure that not only we're going to find a way to fund it, if we're going to not lose people, we're going to have to do something. So, do we do something now to move the steps? You know, so step two is now step one. Do we do some COLA adjustments? Do we move people? I don't know the answer, just telling you, don't be surprised when I come back here in the near future, unless y'all just tell me I'm totally crazy. But this is impacting us, the ability to hire. I can't hire a public works person for what we've advertised. It's that simple. I mean, we have two good candidates that could start tomorrow and be great assets to us, but they're like, you know, "I'm not taking a four, five, six dollar an hour cut to come work for you and actually do more work." Or, again, trying to hire the executive assistant, or even the person that's right at Zach and doing that. I mean, it's a competitive market. Before I go to that, what I wanted to also say is, and I started on that, so I tell you that, you know, we got these one through five, one through seven steps. If I go, you know, so the question would be, "Well, if everybody's at step one, we're not doing too bad, right? But if we're five, we're probably not doing very good. So, where do we fall out?" And I just broke it out by our departments. So, in the admin area, which puts court and admin in there, on average, we're at four-point-two of the step system. So, out of five, most everybody's above step four, even with new hires. Fire department, same thing, step four to above. Now, they do have, in both of our departments, right, those first-line people, they have seven steps, so they're already above the mid-point. Police, it's a little lower, only because, one, they had some additions, and two, just people have moved up, and so they've gone up or down, however you want to look at it, they've gone up in the grade, but instead of being at step four or five, they're now at step two, so they have some progression. They're sitting at about three-point-six. Public works, which quite honestly, they're a fairly young group there, in a sense, is three-point-four, and parks, you can then enter it for. So, we're at the upper end of our pay grades. So, we have people that are hitting the top that can't progress anymore, and that's, you know, when we went into this budget, we were going to probably have about twelve people in that spot, and only because of a couple of retirements and promotions, we ended up with six or seven. And about half of those are kind of at the department, the exempt level, and a half anonymous. And we have cops that are sitting there, you know, they're in step five and six and sevens, and, you know, they'll go and take a position at a larger organization, maybe a little bit of cut pay year one, but three years from now, they're going to be sitting there at that twenty percent higher than what they're paying. And we don't want to lose good people. It costs money to get them, and we like to keep them, and we've got good people in our departments. I can't think of a department we have where I go, "Man, we've got some really losers that we like to get rid of." We have good people, and we really try to focus on that. All right. So, that's the money side, so the staffing side, and I know we can't do all this, right? Believe me. But, you know, where are we, where are we short? Where are the things that we need? Well, almost without a doubt, we need another person in the admin, we say customer service clerk. I mean, we did, right, maybe we heard it tonight about finances, you know, just trying to have separation of duties. We know the court needs help, right? I mean, we have to bring the police clerk over to help us on court, but then when she's not, when she's over here working a day or two trying to get to court, what's happening in the police department? Stuff's not, the records aren't getting in, and stuff's not getting done. The court clerk, you know, takes a vacation. Who steps it up? We have, you know, vacancy or somebody has an illness. Fifty percent of our staff's missing right now in the admin area. So, we need that kind of a position there. And in turn, one of the things we've talked about through the colleges, like KU, K-State, West Hill, the MPA program, and we've done this in the past, we can get that graduate student in that's either in the first or second year. They're really, really good for project-specific things. So, we've been trying to update our, some of our planning types of things, or code types of things. They work really good in that, where you give them projects and stuff in there. I mean, we hired a cop. I mean, one of the cops we got started off as an intern, did a great job for us, became, you know, became one of our pop officers. So, that can be very valuable. The executive assistant, that's probably more down on the wish list, right? So, I mean, but I think the mayor, you know, just try to get things done, right? We need to get to the league, we need to do these things, we've got to process the stuff. Who does that? It's not that I can't go make my own plans and make my own reservations and do this stuff, but when we're doing that, what are we not doing? And so, that support staff, and I use that broadly, is there. Public works, absolutely need another person. I mean, absolutely. I mean, you can see it, drive the roads, you know, you've got two people on vacations and stuff and things, and people, the demands are high. There's no doubt that y'all are expecting more as a council, because if the citizens are saying, "We want more. You made the community better, we want you to make it better. Why is our park not getting mowed for two weeks?" I mean, I noticed that about them. I remember front parks from Florida, now we're expanding the trails, so how are we going to, now people are going to walk that trail, and go, "Well, it's a great trail, but it's all overgrown with weeds." They're not going to like that. So, patch of roads, we heard the guy two weeks ago, right? "I got all these patches out there." We'll get to it. We'll get to it with luck." And so, I think that's a big... We've talked about summertime help, how we can, and that's more of an internal thing, you know, do we put some more money for summer help to do weed eating and things like that? And part of it is, when you've got fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds out there, where you want to work them, who's managing them, right? I mean, it's not that I couldn't probably hire three seventeen-year-olds tomorrow, who's going to look after them? I'm not putting them out there on a ride mower or a couple weed eaters, say, to take off, because we don't know what that outcome will be. They're seventeen-year-olds, right? They do a great job, but sometimes they need to be managed. So who does that? Police and fire, you know, again, and I talked about this, I say additional crew on the fire. So, you know, the bad thing about fire is you don't hire people once in a fire year, right? So, we've talked about, well, if you put another truck in service, right, so we buy an area with a ladder truck, we've talked about, as y'all know, you know, buying the truck seat. I mean, okay, eight hundred thousand dollar truck, paid off over twelve years, four percent interest, ninety-two thousand dollar a year payment. Simple. Put two people on that truck, you know, every single day, I got to have six or seven people to do that. Where do I get those? That's the four or five hundred thousand dollar question. So, it may not happen this year, but in the fire service, that's where it's at. I mean, the ambulance, second, you know, that second half ambulance and things, we fluctuate, we use part-time, you know, whether that's a full-time crew or a part-time crew is something that, I would expect we'll see some of that. I know the chief has said he'd like to see a fire inspector. We have a lot to expect from a fire standpoint. Personally, you know, people on the trucks and in the ambulances that are doing the first response, probably is going to have a higher priority for me, because I present the budget. And then on the police, they have a staffing model that they used for years. As our activities grow, you got to have people there. So, you know, the old problem, you know, you got the DUI, and you stop them, somebody's got to take them to jail, somebody's got to price the car, or the criminal things. So if you only got two people out there, then what happens? And we have, you know, we try to staff three all the time, but we have two, which means we've got overtime, our lieutenant, other people out there working. Again, it may be over a period of time, over three years, that's one of the key things in the public safety and police department. I can do that. I can add one a year. We did that way back in the fire department, but what does that do? One crew's got six, and one's got five, and one's got five, and it's going to be six, and I got a crew with six and one with three. And you can't move people around very easily in the fire service. So, staffing will be a key piece of this discussion. And then the last one is capital. You know, notice I don't have in here buying a police car or buying a, you know, an eight thousand dollar mower for the parks or things, because that's not where we need to spend our time, our focus on. The way we're doing business works, and that is, we have a public works department started now, we have an EMS service that's incorporated with the fire, and we have the pieces, we need to build on them, we don't need to shuffle the pieces anymore. I think we've got to stay... Well, we talked about fire equipment, right, as part of our overall discussion. The next purchase is that ladder truck. I know the chief's looked at a number of types of devices, he would probably replace our reserve pumper. So, having two pumpers in the station, we might have a ladder truck and a pumper and the ambulance, and then figure out where we put people on that apparatus. But even if you tried to put two people on each piece of apparatus, that's six. We have five. So, we have to figure that out. But that's a big ticket item, right? That's an eight hundred thousand plus item, chief, give or take. Roads, roads are expensive. I mean, throwing a hundred thousand dollars on a road doesn't get you far. I mean, you've seen what that does. Now, we're actively going for the grants and things, but you're not going to get those every year, and we can't... We make good investments in our roads, now what do we do to maintain them? And then what do we do about the, you know, the next phase? What do you do for the ninety-eighths and the ninety-fourths and the hundred seconds? And, you know, throwing chip seal on them only gets you a couple of years, or some kind of a coating on them, that you don't have the width and you don't have, you know, you don't have the visibility, and you got the overgrowth, and you don't have the ditches. So they're not cheap, they're not cheap items. And then I think a facility study is really valuable for us, to say, where do we start at? And it's all a puzzle. It's an area where we can, you know, use capital expenditures, debt. I think we can talk about, how do you fund that? You know, we have the sales tax we have now, do you modify that sales tax? Do you add some to the sales tax? What do you do versus just funding it with debt? Now, values are growing, so that helps that some, but whether we can fund a piece of that without some other revenue, I don't know. But I think, if I was putting on an order, I put the fire station, this kind of the first piece, right? You got to get the crew quarters built, so you can get the people moved over into the proper space, and we have enough space. Then you can renovate that admin area, and that takes care of kind of that first phase. We can work with that, and we don't have to touch anything else. Public works, again, we've got a lot of assets out there. The biggest thing there is finding the site. I mean, I think we have a pretty good idea of the area, putting it in the middle of the city, off of, you know, Hundred Second Street or something like that, like where we have the excess property that we have right now, people hold the range, that's not where we, that's not where it works at. Having it on the corner of Enderfield Drive and Kansas Avenue is, you know, that's not the place for it. So, I think we know it probably makes more sense to be in more of the industrial, commercial area of the city, but where do you find the right piece of property for? So, I think looking at property acquisition around that is probably the biggest thing. That's not, that's not an expensive building, so to speak, to build. I mean, it's, you know, a fire station has a lot of specialty pieces to a public works facility, doesn't have as many. I mean, you need space to park things, you need some, you know, clean working areas, you know, storage, that's, you know, it's a little bit simpler building, a little less expensive. And I throw the community center in here, because I think it's an area where we have a great asset that we haven't done much with. And, you know, I don't know why I put it to the top of the line, but it doesn't take as much to bring that building up and make it more usable for us as a community, so that you can have those multi-room, so we can do more recreational indoor type of activities than just having a great big open area. That's fine for shelter, but really for community events and uses, it doesn't function very well for that. And we have it, and we're not getting rid of it, and we can't convert it to something else. I mean, it's federally funded, and it will always have to serve in some type of like community room type purpose, and at least be a backup for a storm shelter. I can't, I can't make it a police station or a city hall over there doing things unless we're going to pay the federal government back everything they paid with all the interest at the current date, and I don't think that's probably a really good investment. So, where do we go from here? We should have our actual clerk certified evaluations, and, again, it's other thing reasons. So the appraiser appraises all the property, sends it to the clerk, then the clerk decides, so to speak, if there's any properties that have to go on or off because of, they're on the tax abatements or whatever, they're under BOD. So, the clerk is the one that certifies the roles to us. That happens June fifteenth, it used to be July first. This is, again, some of that tax cap changes with dates. We'll be doing our various budget workshops, but around the end of July, we have to set that maximum budget again. That means, set it at a number, and once you've set it at that, you basically can't increase the amount you're going to spend, and you can't change the mill levy up. So, and the mill levy is directly driven by, pretty much by your budget. So, you can set it high for the public hearing and bring it down, but you can't have it down and go up. So that's why that's an important date, and then we hope to have everything done by the first meeting in August. This assumes no special meetings. So if we decide we need to have workshops separate from the council, so we assume we'll do workshops before council meetings, but if we need to get into a weekend or another night, we'll determine that if you're willing. Okay. That is the good news. Again, just trying to set the stage. If there's anything about that stage you felt I was off track of, I think over the, I realized in advance, I've been there eleven years, I didn't even realize it's been that time, it's been a great eleven years. I think I've got a pretty good idea where, over time, the council and the community is laid up inside, so I'm trying to take that knowledge and bring it forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you going to make this part three?
Can I let?
Are you going to make this next part three?
Yes. I have nothing further.
You have nothing further? Okay.
If I have anything, do I have anything?
What does today's do?
Chief, please. Just some folks in training. Couple graduated from the academy, have a new hire. So we've got anywhere from eight to fourteen weeks, we'll have a few people out there. So lots going on. Our activity, we are probably three months ahead. We were drawing a case number, I think the comparison was twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen? We're, it was, we were three months behind. Twenty-fifteen, we drew the case number, now three months ahead of that twenty-fifteen already, and those are, so if you can get my drift here, we're three months ahead of even twenty-fifteen, we started our, kind of our change, instead of our record setting, if you will, we just continued to grow, and there's calls for service, and it does include some proactivity, but the proactivity is just, it's just been there. It's kind of, we've been running case to case in some ways, you mentioned that, you know, you only have two folks out there. We just cannot do that. We run two people to every call for sure, because we do a lot of backups. You know, we've had a lot of violent police officers in our areas, who've made some changes about eighteen months ago, that's part of this change. But following suit, we're folks around us as well, just we want to keep our people safe. It's not safe. It's not safe for you as a citizen, where we have somebody down at the county hooking somebody in, and the only person left is the supervisor on duty, and that's it. Three, four in the morning, what are you doing on the domestic levels? It's not traditional where, in a sense, maybe you live somewhere else where the county sheriff has, you know, three or four guys out to help you. That's not what we have here. We have to call for help from other folks, who are just as short-staffed and running as busy as we are, and that's Casey Kaye in March Springs. So, it's where a little unique situation. So in other words, as I was caught in two thousand and eight by the county sheriff at the time, they said, "You catch them, you clean them." So in other words, you're kind of standalone out there. And we've been really efficient in that way, so not to beat this thing to death, but we have made some substantial progress in addressing the calls for service and keeping our people safe in a number of ways, equipment and some of the policies and procedures that we have in place. But when we mentioned, we talked about adding people, it's something we've been slow and progressive about. We understood that there was public works and all these other things that were, that the city needed, but this is the same message from two thousand and eight, this data has not changed. We needed fifteen people assigned to patrol, that three adds to fifteen, and it guarantees every day that we have three people twenty-four seven. And that's how you have to do it, because of the lead blockers. Just think of it, maybe the short time that you've been here, how many times have we said, "Well, this person is gone, sick, having babies, turnover, takes forever to get somebody through the door." And so that just leaves us short, that means guys are on twelve of our shifts, a lot of overtime, and what happens to that? They lose days off, and we talked about it over the years, you've heard me say it, Mr. Adams, we have vigilance fatigue. We got guys suddenly who are tired and retired on duty, and they've only been with us two or three years, because we're working so much. And so that's why we get a little bit concerned about that, but you'll hear us talking about that. But we understand what budget is, and we've understood that since two thousand and eighteen, it's been tough, but over the years, you've been generous towards us, and I think we're in a good position to move forward. And so that's going to be our discussion, our focus. And keeping our focus, we're at that, you've heard that step one worked really well, yet us two years later, we're not competitive. And the people that we'd like to see come over, who may have four, five, six years, so we're not training the very, very rookie person, but maybe we get some experience, we're not competitive at all, we're not really seeing those folks come through our doors. So we'd love to see that as a change, and just get on track. And we had that discussion, like you said, six, seven years ago, where we went through this, and we said, "We have no choice." It says, "We've got to become so uncompetitive." But now, the trend is, we're going a little slow, and I appreciate all the work that Mr. Webb has done for us on that and the whole city, my friend, please. So, and that's really it. Appreciate Captain Short filling in last time for me, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Chief, please.
I'm going to harp on that, the deputy firefighter paramedic starting Sunday on rotation. I'm John, this is one of our volunteers. He extended a job off, he's back from Las Vegas, his wife is a contract nurse, so she will be back late August, her will secure when her contract is done, out on the west coast. He and his kids are back in the metro area now, so we look forward to having him on shift to go from, our paramedic, Will Smith, over to Ogden Park. Other than that, we are getting ready for the motorcycle run and golf scramble and all the good stuff for Christians coming around. So, other than that, it's all done.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, you mean you were on vacation, and you got nothing?
Just catching up.
We no longer have a city attorney, so I can't ask him that. Uh, he was saying... Councilman Adams, you lead off.
There's a lot to think about, Mike.
Yep.
This is always kind of a reflective time of year, to realize, we've had about a one point two million dollar swing in the last eleven years for cash reserves, which we really thank you for. I know you're the main driver on that. Department heads holding the line, and we keep asking over and over and over again, and you guys keep coming through it. And we really appreciate everybody's dedication to what they do, and really ultimately, the dedication is to the citizen. I think we live in it, and we're, so thank you for that, and we, I wanted to work, it will be a great place to work in, and so we'll just keep moving forward on that.
I just wanted to thank all the department heads and Michelle for your work on this. It looks like, I can't imagine how many hours we're spending just preparing all the different reports for us tonight. I was going to ask, I think later this month, we have an event at the Fitzell Court going on, and if you've got any updates, or if you could just tell us a little bit about what that will entail for our community?
So I've been, I've reached out to Blake McFarland, who was the person from Florida KC who was here, and just essentially wanted to get some, whatever supplemental material that they need. We provided some, and we're starting to kick out online. They do a lot of their outreach for it online, so they'll be able to track how many folks sign up for the tournament through clicking on a link that we provide, so let's see if that's wrapped up, and we can see how much we actually contribute to that. I reached out to the Carson Rec Advisory Board, too. What we want to do is, you know, Mike brought up sports registration, so we want to try and, you know, bird dogs in areas where we can be proactive in trying to gain, increase people's awareness of our program. So, I reached out to Carson Rec Advisory Board, and I think I'll put it out to you guys too now. We'll probably be having a signup booth for Fall Soccer, that Fizzell event, at the end of the month, if we, you know, start graduating through that. But I'm not, I've asked Blake, it was just earlier today, I sent him an email about where we're at, or where they're at, really, our event, as far as signups, yet again, what they do.
What's that, June?
June twenty-third, or something like that. From nine to one.
Yeah, along with what they said about the work that you all do on that budget, and I can see where, Mike and I've talked a little bit, I can see where there's going to be some pretty serious issues to deal with on it this year. There might be some bad news out there, there might be some good news. You guys do such a great job, it's really good to have you working that hard, of course, for that little bit of pay that you get.
There's always, this is what I know for sure, there'll always be more things we need than there will be jobs needed.
And I understand that, and I think...
Goes without saying.
And I think we all do, because any time that we're down here, we see an awful lot of work going on, and a lot of socializing and stuff, but it doesn't go unnoticed on that. The mower was looking pretty good, I kind of snooped around out there watching it a little bit, kind of tailgated it, and it's going to be an effort, but it worked. It's gonna be an effort, but it works, yes. And I know that it's hot and it's a slow-going process, but I think when they get the hang of that thing, it'll be, it'll be a real good asset for us.
And I'm dedicating two days a week to it now, like all the vacations are work, and that'll give us time to do everything else.
But it was pretty cool to see that out there, and to see them learn how to use it. I know I wouldn't wanna touch that thing, and I never was afraid of the equipment. I don't think I'd want anything to do with that. Is River, are you open?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I was just curious about how.
It's a bit funky, you don't wanna drive down.
Well, you did a month to you before, you know, at least you can now.
One section was good.
I think that's all I have, thank you.
Margaret?
Well, the part about being second to last, I'll agree with everything all the council members have said, all the hard work, every department puts in there, and especially Michelle, I do a little bit of that where I work too. So I have a big idea what you go through in this. It's, it's a lot of work, but like Mike said, the auditors review your work, they don't do your work. But that goes with everybody too, all of your staff.
Our team.
Absolutely. Mike, any update on our attorney, or is that back burner?
Well, not, someone, but, so, I may not be able to touch on this. We've met with, I guess I would say, I've tried to break to the mayor kind of three, what I call three different styles, and, you know, ultimately it's the mayor's book and the council. But, you know, we've met with some people that I would call are the large firm type of attorneys. So they come from a big firm, but they have municipal experience, internal. Pretty much everybody we've talked to has some tie to Windout County at some point in their career, that prosecutors here and they work in the law offices. You know, trying to take that into account as well, because it's a unique place. So we've met with the people at the large firm. We met with an individual who serves as an assistant city attorney with another community on contract. And then we have another one set up, which I would call is kind of that small mid-size firm. So they've got, you know, four or five attorneys, some paralegals and things. Typically, at least we've had the, you know, we've been with the self-proprietor type, two partners and a half, it's kind of like Dave's or, you know, Price's or so. I think ultimately it'll get down to, you know, where that's been. The large firm, the pluses are they have depth, they can bring other pieces to the table, whether it's like a development or, you know, latest, greatest personnel things. And with that comes dollars, right? And, you know, consistency, I mean, I don't think we want attorney A here this week, attorney B here next week, and then maybe somebody, and, oh, we've got this new person out of law school. So it's, sometimes that's the challenge with a large firm. And, you know, the self-proprietors, sometimes the problem is they don't have the resources, so you have to work a little harder to back that up. The mid-size one, I feel, I, you know, that's kind of a rat. Maybe wishing this comments could, with number two, we have the third one set up. Unless the mayor tracks otherwise, I would imagine we'll pull from one of those three. I think we've got a good capacity there. We looked at a number of others, but I think those threes, again, I think we, for me anyways, you know, municipal experience is critical. I mean, there are plenty of attorneys out there, I should, we can hire a number of attorneys. But having somebody that understands municipal, because it's a different area. Economic development background is a plus, right? You know, they've worked around the contract issues and things around that. Yes, we have, you know, good bond attorneys and stuff, but, you know, there's things that maybe they can bring to the table. That connection, you know, Windout County, I mean, I know that's a sensitivity. You know, not to say have to be a Windout County attorney, but, you know, are they experienced in our courts? I mean, you know, you went to, you went to court with Dave Deckers, and you walked in the courthouse, you know, there was no doubt of anybody doing there. And you don't want some person that's now walking in Windout County courthouse, not that we spend much time there, doesn't even know where it's at. I don't think that's every one year. So at least that's the feedback I've got, mayor, and I think we're on the same track there. Hopefully that helps. Oddly, oddly, mayor's appointment, I, that's one of the four positions of appointment, so I will not overstep his bounds on that.
Thank you.
We need it, yeah. Sooner than likely.
Thanks for all the work on the budget, and I would totally agree that I would like to see that be a local attorney. Windout County experience. That's all.
Well, without going in too much in depth, what Mike has alluded to, the two of them that we have interviewed have had, well, I think both of them have lived in Windout, because they no longer live in Windout County, but they have lived and worked in Windout County and for the UT. And so they have some, one particularly has a lot more municipal, municipal government experience than the others. And we're gonna find out what the third one has, so. And I, and I told this to Margaret, I said, and this has always been my philosophy anyway, is that I want the right person, I don't care where they come from, I want the right person, you know, that can serve us. And there again, that individual works with Mike all the time and not with us at all. So that's why it's key that we have these interviews. But anyway, and so I'm gonna end my comment with my appreciation for all of you, department heads and staff for your work. And we're on track. There's some exciting things coming.
I don't know, track, we're on, we're on.
There's some exciting things coming, so be our turn.
The TV show.